Good evening. This time I'd like to call the January 14, 2009 Planning Commission meeting to order. Let the record show that all members are present. Item number three, as everybody knows, at the beginning of the year we have the election of the chairman and vice-chairman for 2009. This time I'll open up the floor for nominations for chairman.
I'd like to nominate Sherri Sloman.
I second it.
I'd like to nominate Alan Kraus.
Hang on there, let's see. Sherri Sloman, that was Paige. Second by Beverly. Okay. Steve nominated me. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Michael Marshon. Any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All in favor of Sherri Sloman, please say aye.
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 That was...
I think you need a roll call on this.
Okay. I probably wouldn't have... So we had...
I think the secretary can do that.
Okay, Sherri.
Aye.
Paige.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Steve, no. Julio.
I'll be last. Any man anymore, huh? This is gonna go around a second ballot. I'm gonna stay no for now.
Okay. Buddy.
Yes.
And Michael.
No.
And Bob.
Have to abstain.
And I say no. Alright, so Stacy.
I'm not ready.
You weren't ready, alright. That's fine, we'll wait.
Did you abstain or did you say no?
I said no, for now.
You need...
Well, it's gonna go around a second time.
Yeah, Stacy, you wanna hear it again?
I have four and two.
Alright. Sherri. Just say it, let's do it again.
Wouldn't a proper method say who you vote for? When you have two candidates.
Well, I mean...
I think you have an abstention there, Stacy.
So you still need a vote.
Right.
For who you're voting for, not yes and no, because there's two candidates.
We can do it that way?
So you say Sherri or Alan? Or do we need to address each motion as they...
I said, yeah.
It's not really one motion, it's only a motion. The candidacy were open and two were proposed. There's really no motion to say. It's just two candidates were proposed, right?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so one...
Okay.
Just to simplicity then, Counselor, may I propose that we just start at the beginning again and you vote for the candidate?
Of your choice. Have fun with me. Alright. Sherri.
Sherri.
Thank you. Paige.
Sherri.
Thank you. Beverly.
Sherri.
Alright, Steve.
Alan.
Julio.
Alan.
Alan, Alan. Bob.
Alan.
Michael.
Alan.
And Buddy.
Sherri.
Okay. Five, four.
Okay.
That's all we need.
Ready for vice?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to...
Wait, well, I'm just gonna make it official, okay? So elected chairman is Alan Kraus for 2009. Alright. Now entertain a motion for vice chair.
Nominate Sherri Sloman for vice chair.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Nominate Michael Marshon.
I have a second. Hearing none, motion dies for lack of second. No other nominations, nominations are closed. Sherri, by acclamation, is vice chair. Everybody good on that? Okay. And I just, a couple words, thank you all for your support for another year. I think we've accomplished a lot in the past year and I'm looking, really looking forward to this year. We got a really good master plan that we will be putting forth before the public, have a lot of public meetings, we'll need everybody input in attending those meetings and educating the public. A lot of stakeholders will be involved, very aggressive, very positive thing for the parish, and I know we're all excited about it, administration on down, so just ask for your support and look forward to working with you. Okay, item number four, acceptance of the minutes from the December 10, 2008.
Motion. Second.
Motion to accept revised minutes.
We have revised ones for planning? Did you get...
Revised minutes for zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it was a... Had a motion by Michael for acceptance, second by Bob. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number five, at this time I'd like to open up the floor for public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward, you'll have three minutes to speak on any topic not on the agenda. No one wishing to speak? Public comment period is closed. Item number six A, public hearing grant approval of the following family partition. The Abert Thomas property tracks X1B1, X1B2, and X1B3. Do you have somebody representing?
Yes, Herbert Thomas, and...
Is it Mike? Just make sure. Speaking to Mike, please.
Yes, Herbert Thomas, and what I'm doing, I'm donating an acre each to each one of my kids, two kids, and that's why I was breaking to put them in my backyard, which they already live there now. Each one is set up with a mobile home on each acre at this time.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any questions? Sir, could you stay up here, please?
Which way does the water drain on this property?
The water drains back into the swamp by Summerfield.
Okay.
Why aren't the mobile homes shown on the plat? The existing mobile home?
I'm sorry, I'm partially done.
That's okay. The existing mobile homes, I'm just wondering why they're not shown on the plat?
They are existing, they were put there a little over a year ago. My daughter has a double wide on the center acre, and my son has a single wide on the far back acre.
Is there a representative from the... Who drew these, who drew the plat?
I'm sorry.
Is there a representative from the engineering company that drew this plat here with you tonight?
No, Mr. Bennett didn't make it.
I just want to point out that the date on the survey is, you know, June of '07, so... And then he recertified it on December of '08, and he probably recertified it for the application and didn't update it.
So you have a listening device?
I don't... Do we have a listening device? No? I don't know that... No, sir.
Okay, I thought I understood you had one at the start of the meeting that was set. Okay.
They may have one in audio. If they come out, we'll get it to you. I think you need to tell them before the meeting that you need it.
Okay.
Are either of the mobile homes in your servitude of passage or in any of your...
No.
So we can't tell that from this plat?
Each mobile home is set off with the back sets and the offsets from property lines, 20 foot, 20 foot or greater, which is greater than 20 from back property lines, more than 10 foot from end property line, and approximately 70 foot from the front property line.
Mr. Thomas, there's some things missing on this plat that need to be here, and that's why we were asking if there was someone from engineering that was here with you. There's quite a few things missing and we have some questions, such as you have two utility servitudes listed on your plat.
It's a servitude, it's a servitude down the front of the property that... Yeah, it says existing 15-foot servitude. Now, the existing 15-foot servitude did not cross my front acres at the time. That property was from back in the '70s when it was originally last drawn, and there was no servitude there. Put the servitude in showing...
He's bringing you something, I believe, to help you hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear us?
Definitely.
Good.
Alright. The property was purchased in the early '70s on the front part. There was no servitude or anything drawn in on those.
When you say the front part, I'm assuming you mean...
For the house.
The lot with the house, correct? Okay.
Correct. When they... The two acres were bought separately, and those two acres showed a servitude for when they were purchased joining my property. And the property lines we have now is showing a 40-foot private servitude coming off the end of the blacktop to the property.
Yes, sir, but what Paige is pointing out is you have a 12-foot utility servitude and a existing 12-foot utility servitude, both of those on the north side of the private servitude, the 40-foot, and we're wondering, it looks like it's doubled, we're wondering if they're both necessary?
No, the 12... I see what you're saying now. No, the 12-foot is not necessary.
Charles, you had some input?
The drain servitude. At present time, there is a 12-foot utility servitude across X1B1. They're extending that 12-foot utility servitude, but there's an offset, and it's extended over X1B2 and then X1B3. So it's really not a double, they're just tying in to the existing.
Okay.
You see? Right now, the servitude only comes to the eastern property line of X1B1. Then he's extending it to give utilities to the other two.
Okay, so what's that 15-foot? Wait a minute, now you really got me.
That's an existing 15-foot servitude across the northern...
Is that a drainage, is that drainage?
Is it drainage? Yeah, good point, thank you.
It's drainage, from what I understood.
Okay, then they've got double drainage, don't they? Because it looks like there's drainage on the south property boundary also.
But the property does flow to the south, from what I understood.
Well, that was...
Okay, wait a minute.
Question that I've got for you, Charles, was there a revised plat to this? Because the plat that I've got does not show any servitude on the southern line of the property.
It was revised to show that 15-foot servitude on the southern side, yes.
So I've got a copy of the plat prior to the revised... Okay.
I'm sorry.
Are we sure that that 15-foot servitude along the north side of X1B2 and B3 and X1 is drainage? It just says existing 15-foot servitude.
Yeah, it doesn't say what it is.
Well, from what I understood from the engineer, it was primarily for drainage initially.
Is there drainage on it?
No.
No. That is a power line.
Well, if it's a power line, then what are we doing putting another utility servitude there?
Because if it's a power line, only a power... Well, I can't answer that, I shouldn't say that. I really don't know, because that isn't what I was told.
There is a power line down that back property line.
On the southern, on the southern side?
Does it feed the... Does it supply power to the trailers? To the two mobile homes. The power line. Correct. To the two mobile homes. Do you have gas out there? No, sir.
When you say, when you say the back property line, are you talking about the southern property line or the northern property line?
That would actually be...
Top of the page or the bottom of the page?
Bottom of the page.
So the utility lines along the bottom of the page?
Longways across the bottom of the page, yes, sir.
Oh, this is all wrong, yeah.
Well, then, yeah, this is... Charles, if the drainage, if it flows to the south and the drainage is on the south side, we put the drainage servitude where the utility lines are.
It shouldn't be there.
But they're already there.
Mr. Thomas.
We have a drainage ditch. There is a drainage ditch, it comes off of the, from by the road all the way down.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Mr. Thomas, let me just... Are you... I think we're all confused here. If you look at your map, on the back side, on the southern side of X1B1, 1B2, and 1B3, it says a 15-foot servitude.
Commissioners?
Okay, and then there's a, then there is a utility servitude at the very bottom of the page of our sheet, and I think that's the utility servitude by Spelman Wall Road. Is that the power lines you're talking about?
Paige, can Julio go down there and kind of help?
If we may, can we defer this to the next item? And I'm gonna excuse myself and go get some information.
And help him kind of explain everything.
Do we need a motion to do that? I'll make a motion to defer it and...
30 minutes until we, to the next item.
30 minutes?
Up to the next item.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a just motion, 30-minute deferral by Julio, seconded by Buddy. Any one oppose? Okay, well, move on to the next item. Item 6B, the Clarence Clifton properties, lot 7D1, 7D2, and 7D3. Yes, sir.
James Stiglou, representing Mr. Hugh Bond, on the following family partition. Some comments were made, they were addressed, asking the commission for approval.
James, how does the property drain? It was the staff comment number three, and it says no, no response.
It drained from south to north, I believe. If you see, I don't know if you rode up to the property on both sides, it was kind of a swell ditch on both sides, so it should look like everything drains up to the...
Okay.
There was 15-foot existing drainage servitude across the back. Speaking to my client after the brush is cleared and everything like that, he was planning on digging a swell ditch across the back, even further than... Along that existing 15-foot drainage servitude.
James, tell me about the road, the concrete driveway, the road that's on this property. Is that built to parish standards? Do you know? If you don't know, just...
No.
Okay.
Not right offhand, I mean, it looks like it meets the width of a parish road, it's a regular subdivision, and it's got 60-foot servitude, which is usually required for an open drainage ditch subdivision, so... As, I don't know exactly if it's the parish standard, but...
This property is...
It is private.
Right, 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 but this property has come before us numerous times, and we've seen, I don't know how many different plats, first of all, it was a subdivision, then it was a family partition for these people, and we've just seen it several different times. And obviously, we're not comfortable with the property, and I would like to see the owners of the property able to use their property, however, we, we have not, a plan has not been presented that we're comfortable with, that we feel like meets the ordinance and we know is not going to be subdivided in the future. So I don't know what the solution is.
Mr. Bond's here, if you'd like to ask him a question about... And I know each one of these is going to his children, and I think one of his children are present and planning on building on it pretty soon if this...
I think something else that, where she was going with that is, there's four lots, and if you divide each one of those four lots three times, you suddenly have a subdivision that has gotten around the rules, regulations of subdivision.
There is, if you written out, there is a lot all the way in the back that somebody is building one house on that entire lot.
Is it...
Lot 7C.
You can make a motion that no further subdivision of any of these lots.
Well, yeah, but that's not before us right now.
It could be a motion.
Well, the question I've got for you is this, and maybe not for you, James, maybe this is, this is something that the owner should ask. I'm trying to find out what exactly has changed with this piece of property, because this is the exact same lot that came before the commission back in 2006 to be resubbed, so what has changed that the commission should change its ruling on this piece of property? Because, you know, we've got, we've got a pretty hefty packet of background on this, in fact, and included in this is a public notice to the Corps of Engineers, and it shows this being developed as a subdivision, so...
I believe the whole track wasn't valid.
That was in the beginning, that was the, that was at the very beginning, and it never came before the commission. Now, last week I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Chris Ewing, who was the engineer, our engineer, last year, and last year this piece of property was supposed to come before us. He and I discussed some issues he had with it then, and I was able to get in touch with him and kind of go back over those issues. The road, the road, no information was ever submitted to him as to what standard this road had been built. Wetlands, drainage issues, which is the same thing that shut down the subdivision at the very beginning, but his feeling at the time too was, he didn't figure this road was going to hold up very long because of all the wetlands and the drainage issues, so it's all, it's all going together. So I'm trying, what, why should this commission go ahead and change its...
To answer your question about what's different from this plat in 2006, the road wasn't in place. I don't believe...
The right-of-way was in place.
The right-of-way was in place, but the road wasn't in existence, so that's a change that was, was not present in 2006. And this isn't a public road, it's a private road, so it has to be maintained by the residents.
It's a private road, but as soon as you get two residents on it, somebody's gonna come to this commission and say, hey, we want you to take our road into the parish maintenance system. It's a concrete road, you ought to be happy to get it. No. No. Drainage issues, taking, taking in every road in the parish, that should not become the burden of the parish.
James, I have a question. When you say, I just like it for public clarity, when you say last lot is being built on, a house is being built on, are you talking about lot 7C?
7B, I think it's 7B back there. You go to the end of the road, it's the very last one. I think there was only four lots in this original subdivision, so it's the one in the very back in the end, there's a dirt pad, there's a pond built, dug out back there, dirt mound.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments at this time? If not, like to open up the floor for public hearing? Anyone wishing to come forward? May speak on this property, you have three minutes. Yeah, just state your name and address, name.
My name is Elizabeth Ballard. I live at 39427 Germany Road.
Okay.
We need a motion to...
Is that...
Take additional material.
Yeah, what, I mean, is this something you're preparing, or something additional with the property?
Right.
What is it?
It's a letter from...
We may have it, I'm just...
This is a letter from the Department of Environmental Quality to the Parish of Ascension.
What's the date on this?
August 7, 2007.
Do we have that, Charles?
No.
No.
That's, that's a letter that was received at the parish president's office, and it finally made its way to us, DEQ wanting applications presented prior to dealing with sewage treatment plants and so forth. That's, is that, is that what it is, Ms. Ballard?
Yes, that's what it is.
It's something that we've all read, we've already gotten a copy, we've read it now. It's, we want to refresh your memories with it, I mean it's...
You can refresh your memory and reference it, but we don't, I mean, we've...
You don't need it.
No.
Okay, because Charles had asked me for a copy, so I'll just give these to Charles.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Good evening, commissioners. For those of you who have heard me oppose requests for a division of this property before, I must apologize and ask for your patience while you hear me once again. I believe this request for a family partition is simply a step to create a one-street small subdivision. In effect, this request will bypass Ascension Parish's ordinance regulating such development. Adherence to parish regulations, state and federal law, must be applied equally to all developers. I do not wish to see abuse of our ordinance allowing family partitions. Commissioners, that is exactly what I believe the request before you tonight is. This property is low, does not drain well, and before it was purchased was heavily wooded. The land is not appropriate for home sites without extensive dirt work. A portion of the Clarence C. Clifton Jr. property is classified jurisdictional wetlands. I am an adjoining property owner. Should a development be allowed with more than one house every four acres, the field required and impervious surfaces would prevent my property from draining, since our land drains in that direction. I have presented, you have a letter from the Department of Environmental Quality to Ascension Parish. To summarize that letter, the state makes known a concern for the water quality in our parish. The state also requests in part that our parish, quote, "require developers to submit project plans that include details of design, location, installation, treatment ability, and operation of wastewater treatment and collection systems," end quote. Without oversight from Ascension Parish for subdivision development concerning the Clarence C. Clifton Jr. property, compliance to the 2007 letter from DEQ will be impossible. The reality is, I believe, without the submittal of a subdivision plan to the Ascension Parish permit office, numerous individual package septic systems will be installed. These systems will discharge to land that has draining problems already. When I built in 1995, we had to have a small treatment system for our home. We had that system drained to the ditch along Germany Road. In 1995, as still today, we do not have a parish sanitary system. However, in 2009, systems do exist that treat sanitary wastewater from homes and subdivisions.
Okay, you have 20 seconds, okay.
These systems are more effective than individual home systems. Without governing this property as a subdivision, such a system will not be required. I'll conclude by stating again for the record my continuing opposition to any division of this property by whatever name, corporation, or cartoon character that comes before you, because I sincerely believe this is being requested in an attempt to sell smaller lots.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Shelby Ballard. I'm Elizabeth's husband. I just want to add to it that the property that they're talking about dividing at this point in time, the drainage to it goes to the north. From that point on, it goes to the back. The pad, which was referred to where the house is being built, they've had to come back to this pad numerous times, add field, and recompact it. back to this pad numerous times, add fill, and recompact it due to the fact that it sinks. At the point that this piece of property, the pad where this house is at, that's where the drainage for the back half of all of this property drains to. And it actually has built a dam to drain any of the rest of the property off that way. And at this point in time, I would have to oppose any division of the property without possibly plans for a subdivision submitted to the parish council protecting the parish, and I might add my piece of property also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Fargou?
Yes, sir.
Got a couple of questions for you. Let me make sure I got the history of this thing straight. January of '06, came in subdivided into seven lots. I don't say you're the property owner.
Three months ago, I don't... I don't know any past history of this property. So anything happened in 2007, 2006, I was not aware of any of that.
All right, well, just so that you know the history.
Okay.
January of '06, subdivided into seven lots. Five months later, they divided one of those lots into four more lots for a total of 11 lots. Five months later, they came to this Commission and asked to subdivide one of the lots yet more, and at that time, it was denied on the basis that it was clearly evident that this is just a piecemeal subdivision. In April of '08, this property came back. I think there was a sense that the Commission was going to ask the same question. You know, this dock is quacking like a subdivision. You're trying to call it a chicken, but it's a swimming duck, as far as I'm concerned. And it's still a subdivision. What's the problem with you guys coming in here and just filing a subdivision and doing a subdivision? You have a road that's supposed to be out there that's not out there. I mean, you know, there's supposed to be a concrete drive, right?
There is.
There is.
It is?
Yeah.
I missed it, okay.
Julio, even though it's a concrete drive, in speaking with Chris Ewing last week, he had concerns with what's underneath the concrete drive and not holding up. So, yeah, it's got a concrete drive, but how long is it going to last?
Is it a driveway or is it a street?
Well, that's it. They... It's a street, according to what we have been presented in the past.
You know, I mean, I think you guys need to... I mean, it's a piece of property that's probably prime for residential subdivision. You know, I just think you need to comply with the regulations. Making it a... Making it piecemealing it like this as a family partition, it's a clear, you know, effort to circumvent the rules and the regulations.
I'm going to make a...
I'm just speaking for myself here.
I want to go ahead and offer up a motion to deny, uphold the... And uphold the Commission's 2006 ruling that this is... This subdivision circumvents our subdivision regulations, and that this property shouldn't come back before us until it conforms with our subdivision regula... Or come back subdivision until it conforms with our subdivision regulations. That's my motion.
I will second that motion based on the staff recommendation to deny.
I think, Mr. Marshawn, is your motion to deny because he can bring... An old property owner can bring their property up whenever they want.
Well, the only thing is, O'Neil, and I'm not telling him he can't, it just needs to... They're circumventing our subdivision regulations by piecemealing this. They're not going to perform a traffic impact analysis. They're not going to perform a drainage impact analysis. And it shouldn't keep coming back to the Commission with this piecemeal situation. It should... If they want to make a subdivision, then let them go through the process the way it has been established in our ordinances.
I understand that. But is your motion to deny, because I don't think you can place conditions on your motion?
My motion to deny is based on the circumventing of our subdivision regulations and create an illegal subdivision.
If that's the basis, I don't have any... Is that the basis of it?
That's the basis.
But you're putting conditions on it, which I don't think you can...
That's the basis.
Second.
Well, I think Paige already seconded it. All right. Any opposition? Motion carries. All right.
Make a motion that we reconsider the Herbert Thomas property.
Motion by Julio to reconsider Herbert Thomas property. Second by Paige. Any opposition? All right, item 6A, Herbert Thomas property. Julio, you want to...
Yeah, if I may, let me try to explain some things, you know, on behalf of Mr. Thomas here. Along the north property line or the extension of Emory Ficklin Road, there is an existing 15-foot servitude which contains a drainage ditch, okay? There is no need for a 12-foot servitude there. The 40-foot private servitude passage can abut to that because the current utilities actually come north and then along the rear of tracks XB1 and XB1B2, all the way to just slightly into track XB3, and that's where the utilities are. There is no swell there at all.
So the drainage servitude...
It's on the north side at the extent... You know, if you take Emory Fick...
So that's not a utility servitude, that's a drainage servitude?
That is drainage servitude.
And the utility servitude is on the southern side of these lots?
It's on the southern side, correct.
So this map is labeled wrong.
This map is unfortunately has some errors in it, and so here's what I'd like to propose to the Commission.
They have to go through public hearings. We haven't had a public hearing yet, so...
I apologize. Just go through public hearing.
Like to open up the floor for public hearing? Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Now, Mr. Dumas?
Okay, so what I would propose to the Commission is that staff, engineering is and the applicant are clear on the minor corrections that need to be done to this plat. It's a culmination of labeling and some adjustments, which I think they can administratively do. So I think to us to not delay this matter any further, I would propose a motion to approve with the following condition, and that is that prior to the plat being executed, the following take place. Remove the north 12-foot utility easement from the plat. Relocate or move the 40-foot servitude passage north, you know, to abut the 15-foot drainage servitude. Label that servitude as a drainage servitude. Show the 12-foot utility servitude along the southern boundary of tracks XB1, XB2, XB3. Put the name of each one of the children on the respective lots. Show the trailers. The 40-foot servitude of passage should also not extend east beyond the boundary line between tracks XB2 and XB3. The reason for that is I don't want it to become a servitude passage for the remaining vacant of land, okay?
How does that property... How do they access that property now? Coming off of Spelman Road?
Emory Ficklin Road.
Do you hear?
No, to there they have access.
Yeah, okay, I should make sure that... They already have the name of the children, right?
Correct. I have it on the drawing, but I think they need to be on the... I think it fits to be on the plaque.
Julio, the southern 15-foot servitude would become a 12-foot servitude?
Yes, sir. That would become a 12-foot servitude for the portion that is utility. The utility doesn't actually traverse all the way across XB3. That ends just a short distance into XB3. So it would only show the part that's actually encumbered by the utility company. But it's a 12-foot utility servitude along the southern property line.
And the 40-foot servitude passage would stop at XB3, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay. And the 40-foot passage is going north by 12 feet?
Correct.
Is that it?
That's it, sir.
Well, there's also a few other notes that are missing.
Okay.
Such as, on this plat, it doesn't say who the water supply is from. That's a note that should be there.
Standard.
There's also in our ordinance, 6100DNH notes that are missing concerning the private road.
Well, the one that I have shows a private water well. That's where the water source is.
I missed that on here.
It's up in the general notes, up in the right-hand lane.
It's in the general notes, in the upper right-hand corner. Well, and...
Okay, I got it.
Commissioner, you're right, and I think, you know, in it, I think maybe we... And any other pertinent notes that staff, you know, that is required by ordinance and staff needs to verify that they're on their product sign in the plat. So I'll amend my motion to include that. Got that, Ms. Webb?
All right, have a motion by Julio to approve with conditions.
I'll second.
Second by Paige Becknow. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number seven, public hearing to consider amending section 20.203D of the subdivision ordinance. Everybody has in their pack that the subdivision ordinance? Mr. Parrenton?
Yeah, I emailed the changes in the corrected ordinance. Did y'all get it? I still got a draft.
I don't think I received it. I haven't checked my email today.
Well, I sent it out. Okay, I still got one with all the minor corrections on it.
You sent the corrected one with all...
Well, actually, O'Neil, it'd be better if all... It'd be better if it wasn't clean like you wanted. I mean, to show what we're changing, what we're adding, what we're taking off. That's... Well, that's where typically when something leaves us and it goes to the council, some of the confusion I've heard from councilmen, they don't know what... They don't fully understand what's being changed, so...
But you do have a clean one, right? Okay. Yeah. Mine doesn't. Mine's not clean. But I mean, this is... I drafted the ordinance, y'all asked in the draft.
We don't have clean ones. We have the same one you got.
Oh, okay.
Which I'm fine with. I agree.
But you know what's being changed, though?
Yeah. Okay.
You're going to read it? Do you have to read it?
No, no, it's not being introduced. It's not a constitutional motion.
I was just having a hearing.
Yes. Any questions by Commissioners? None at this time. I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this item, please come forward. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Any other comments, questions by Commissioners?
Motion to send this forward to the parish council with a recommendation to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michael Marshawn.
Buddy.
Buddy. Second by Buddy. Any opposition? Motion carries.
I'd just like to add that I know the subdivision Subcommittee worked very hard on it, and I think it's a great improvement, and some of the other stuff that they're working on is going to be pretty... A real good improvement for the ordinances of Ascension Parish. Hope the council adopts it quickly.
Committee report, subdivision ordinance committee. Chair, anything else?
I don't have anything to report, but I will mention that our next meeting will be the fourth Monday of the month at 2:00 at VPW.
All right, strategic planning. I don't know if anybody attended. I guess... It seemed like they are meeting before a council meeting, but I haven't seen the regular schedule, so... No report. Item number nine.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is adjourned. We are adjourned.